I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, December 20th, 2018. To remind everyone to silence your phones or any electronic devices. If you've got any blue slips, please fill those out and bring them up to Ms. Jessica prior to the item coming up. Item number two, invocation and pledge allegiance. Mr. Gidry.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we come this evening in the most humble and gracious way we know how, giving a special blessing upon all the blessings that you've given us as a parish, as a city, and as a state. We thank you and we uplift you in every way that we can, Heavenly Father. We know that the incoming year of 2019 will be even bigger and better for all the blessings that you've got in store for us. And we just want to thank you and uplift you. And during this special season, we want to ask a special blessing upon all the families, Heavenly Father, that are here gathered, that they may have a most gracious and just fulfilling Christmas, just to be around their loved ones. Because we don't know what the following year may even bring to us. But we just thank you as a parish and as a city and as a state for the blessings that you've already given us and have made us whole as your Christian people. We uplift you and we thank you for your many blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Can we face the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Gidry.
Here.
Hillary.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
Vice President White.
Here.
And President Barris.
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number four, Christmas musical performance by La Grange High School Choir. Ms. Mayo.
Yes, as the choir come forward, I want to thank Ms. Williams and her choir for coming out today to perform for us some Christmas songs. You guys are ready for a treat. They're good. And Ms. Williams, I'm not telling her age, but Ms. Williams was my choir teacher in middle school at Reynard also. And yes, she's great.
I think I'm gonna stand up with you, do you? Hello. Oh, drop something.
The question is titled "Cower on the Bells," written and composed by Peter Vronhalski. (Singing) One cower bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Don't care away, Christmas is here." Bringing a cheer to young and old, meet in the bar. Ding dong ding dong, that is the song which shall ring all carolily. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere feeling near. Oh, honey, come raise your sound, all in the dance, all in the song. Give it a ring while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas, merry, 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 merry Christmas. All are singing, all are laughing, there's a joy to everyone. One cower bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Don't care away, Christmas is here." Bringing a cheer to young and old, meet in the bar. Ding dong ding dong, that is the song which shall ring all carolily. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere feeling near. Oh, honey, come raise your sound, all in the dance, all in the song. Give it a ring while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas, merry, 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 merry Christmas. All are singing, all are laughing, there's a joy to everyone. All are singing, all are laughing, there's a joy to everyone. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. There's a baby born in Bethlehem. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. There's a baby born in Bethlehem. See amid the winter snow. Baby born in Bethlehem. Fly for us on a pillow. Baby born in Bethlehem. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. Run, run, run to the manger. There's a baby born in Bethlehem. The wise men traveled from afar. Baby born in Bethlehem. They were guided by a brilliant star. Baby born in Bethlehem. Oh, go, tell it on the mountain, over the hills and everywhere. Oh, go, and tell it on the mountain, that there's a baby born in Bethlehem. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Run to the manger, come and see the baby. Baby born in Bethlehem. There's a baby born in Bethlehem. There's a baby born in Bethlehem. Ding dong, berrily, oh, hi. In heaven the bells are ringing. Ding dong, berrily, the sky is filled with angels singing. Gloria, glory, glory. Ozana in exselsis. All God's people, we know our children, joy and gladness. For must say, no, we know, as vanished in sadness. Gloria, glory, glory. Ozana in exselsis. Glory, 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 glory. Now sing, glory, Ozana in exselsis. 'Tis the long, awake time, the Son of God is given. And the ringing of the chime lifts all our hearts to heaven. Gloria, glory, glory. Ozana in exselsis. Gloria, glory, glory. Ozana in exselsis. Ding dong.
Ladies look beautiful, men look sharp. Thank y'all very much. Good job. Good job. Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a good Christmas, ladies. Merry Christmas to y'all. Good work. Why'd you kick the chair? Awesome. I wish I could sing. That chair didn't do nothing, do you? Freaking not wearing it. Your eyes are so pretty. Alright, hell.
Oh, thank you so much.
We have all the jurors back up? Okay, item number five. Consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advisement regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. Got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Item six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have five applications before you tonight and recommend they be approved.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve by Mr. Farnum, a second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes. The regular meeting of the police jury dated November 15th, 2018. I got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Eight, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the fiscal year 2019 annual budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act as follows.
Move to approve.
A, approve the proposed parish budget for fiscal year 2019. B, authorize the parish administrator, the parish treasurer, and/or respective departmental directors to make changes within various budget classifications approved herein. And C, amend the fiscal year 2018 budget for those funds which deviate from estimated budgeted revenues and/or expenditures. I got a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. White on all bullets. Got any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Item nine, administrative presentation of the proposed Calcasieu Parish Police Jury Strategic Plan 2019 through 2022. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are very pleased tonight to present you with what is the culmination of ten months of very intense work by you, the staff, and great input from the public on your formal strategic plan document. Tonight, what I want to do in a short presentation is just hit the highlights. But each of you have in front of you the actual document that we call the strategic plan. And inserted in that is the presentation slides, which serve as a good summary if you want to just hit the high points later. So we want to make sure you know you have that. There's so many people to thank, all the department heads and several employees. Your input was so important earlier in the year. This is a very lengthy process. And I also want to thank Emergent Method, who is our consultant on this. They ushered this through the whole way. John Snow is here with them tonight. He and Seth Erby did a fantastic job. And they specialize in so many things, but public engagement is one of their specialties. And this document will reflect that. So I want to go through this, certainly take any questions you have, but I'll go ahead and try to fill in some blanks here. Quick background, as I said, we've been actually working on this a little earlier than March, actually, but for ten full months. And it's a very defined process, which takes time, but it's worth the time. And the idea of a strategic plan in simple terms is simply to build on what parish government's role should be in the community, one especially that is growing, and looking not just at the current year, but future years. The idea is to establish a clear vision, a strategic set of strategic priorities, and I'll go through each of those briefly. For the coming years, in this case, we felt like three-year period is a good one to focus on. And a good analogy, I would say, is as far as what a strategic plan is and what it does, it's like a roadmap. It's very helpful to know where you're going if you're going on a trip. And Dane and Alberto are probably smiling now because they laugh when I pull out an actual hard copy roadmap and we go somewhere, even though nobody else uses them. This is a hard copy map, Dane, by the way. If you like it online, you can see it there, too. It's worth going just for a minute on the process. Anything that is worth doing, you want to say, well, how did you come up with this document? So very briefly, as I mentioned, lot of input, internal and external. That means employees, as well as citizens and groups, many other groups. Organizations that do strategic plans, which there are many, it's very common to do what's called a SWOT analysis. You look at where your strengths are, where are your weaknesses that you need to develop. Look ahead at what are some opportunities we can take advantage of, but also what are the threats? And that was all done early in the process. We now are proposing in this document a new mission statement for the police jury, a vision statement, and values are what are commonly called core values in a document like this, and I'll go through those briefly. You established as a jury six overarching strategic priorities. What that means is these are broader focus areas, supported by many more detailed goals that departments have come up with, but following your lead in what the six general areas are, and I'll go through each of those. The department's established over a hundred goals to align with those, and that's a very good list. Just throw out a few key numbers here. An unbelievable support, I'm sorry, survey response from employees. Four hundred and seventy-nine anonymously provided employee responses. And so we got some real honest feedback, very good. Seven hundred and fourteen citizen surveys. When you look at sampling, this is an excellent response rate, and it covered all areas of the parish. We were very happy and pleased that the public decided to turn those in. In addition to that, John, our consultants, Seth met, because they wanted to get honest feedback, with over thirty groups. Several community leaders, groups in the community that are very civically active, and we wanted to sit with them face to face in addition to the surveys. All the department heads and their leadership teams, all of you as jurors. And then again, out of that came a hundred and six defined strategic goals that are all in the document in front of you. So, these are ones we need to go through, and I do want to read these out loud because they are important. They set the tone and the future goals. The mission statement, which we got a really good group of jurors and staff combined in a special session just for this purpose, for the mission statement, vision, and core value. So let me read the mission statement first that came out of those. Provide the people of Calcasieu Parish with high-quality services and actions that benefit present and future generations throughout southwest Louisiana. Important to hit some key themes here. High quality, that's self-explanatory, but it was important to put in there. The jurors are really adamant about that. Not only that, it's this idea that you're looking at what's important today, but what's important tomorrow. I know it's kind of a cliche, but it's the children, their children, and their children. This is generational. And what I really love that came out of here is not just for Calcasieu Parish. Everybody recognized that Calcasieu is the hub of southwest Louisiana, and what happens here will influence greatly, good or bad, the surrounding parishes. And they were very adamant, many of the jurors said, look, let's put southwest Louisiana in there because what happens here influences that. I think it's a very good mission statement, and it captures the essence of what you're trying to accomplish here. So let's go to the vision. What is the difference? What do we mean vision versus mission? Mission is a very definitive, black and white statement that lays it out. A vision is more of a dream, if you will, a condition, not a pipe dream. But if you can envision somebody twenty years from now who comes to Calcasieu from another place and to see, what are we like? What is it you would want to be able to say, here's who we are? That's what a vision is. And in the vision statement prepared here, Calcasieu will serve as a model parish for Louisiana, an area with excellent quality of life where citizens want to raise their families, and the infrastructure to position the parish for growth in the years to come. That's a little lengthier than the mission statement by design. You want to emphasize those things that you feel this area, you want to reflect. And it's good to look ahead. It's okay if we're not currently the model parish. I think we are. I think this jury is a model in many areas, but we want to be in more. Quality of life, there's a lot of good quality of life here. Y'all have emphasized, we need to keep working on that. And infrastructure is kind of a pedestrian word. What does that mean? But you need those fundamental things like roads, bridges, and drainage and so forth. Last but certainly not least, those core values, where a mission statement and a vision talks about the what. What do you want to do? What is important? What do we want to be? Your core values say who you are. Okay, when you talk about the police jury, what do you want people to say? And it's a set of core values. You don't want twenty of those up there. We narrowed it down to four, and these are the ones. I think they're very representative of what we, you, as jurors elected, we on the staff, see ourselves as. You're an agency that has vision. This is not new. The whole idea of doing a strategic plan, a three-year road plan, if you're in Tim Connor's shop, looking ahead financially or in any area, vision is important. Collaboration, that is no small thing. We can't do this alone. We need other agencies. We need the private sector. We need the nonprofit sector. We need the faith-based sector, and they need y'all. This is important, especially with dwindling reserves, the state's financial situation and so forth. Dependability is the third one. You might say, well, okay, that sounds nice. Is that really that big a word? Absolutely, that's a big word. It's not a glamorous word, but think about when you say, if you decide, I know it sounds a little funny, hey, that lawnmower's dependable. That person is dependable. When they think of the jury, we think, they do now, and we want to keep thinking, they are dependable. They know what they're doing. They do it consistently, and they do it well. I think that's important. Last but not least, y'all emphasize financial stewardship specifically. It's a very privileged thing, I think, when a set of citizens, the majority of the voters who vote on things such as taxes, they're saying, we are trusting you, elected officials and those that work for you, with our resources. We're asking you to handle them well. As recent as the last meeting, y'all talked about this. The police jury has a history of sound financial management. It's good to write that down because that's what we should be doing. And so, I know I'm taking a little time on these, but these are very important because it drives all of the more detailed things. But these are all in the document. Alright, let's dig down a little. I don't have that many more slides. So what's the framework as we get into some of the meat and potatoes of this document? The question we are answering, I put on that slide. So what is it the police jury needs to do over the next three years to improve Calcasieu Parish for current and future residents? So when you answer that, you want to take it from the broad to the detail. So as I said, you have six strategic priorities you defined. And we will get into those shortly. Everything else comes from that. All the detail ties into that. Each priority is supported by what we call performance metrics. That's a fancy term. It's also called performance measures. It means, okay, guys, you got these areas, focus areas, you got goals. How do you know if you're achieving the goals? That's what performance measures are for. We have some in the document. We will continue to build that as time goes on. So, what are your six priority areas in this document that drives everything else? Number one, and by the way, these are not in a rank. It's not like, they're all equally important. So number one is no more or less important than number two. They're all the six that y'all landed on. Greater efficiencies in resources. A fundamental thing you want is for the resources there, let's make sure we're being efficient. We all know what that means. There's a limited number of resources, let's be efficient. That means, don't try to avoid duplication, too, as much as possible. Responsiveness is in that same priority. That means you're listening to the people all along the way. Don't just go out without getting input. That's number one. Strategic priority two, long-term infrastructure needs. Again, when we say infrastructure, roads, bridges, drainage, utilities such as sewage. That is front and center for what frankly all government... that is front and center for what frankly, all government levels do, but local government, which is nearest to the people, especially in a growth period. Infrastructure is one of those things that you take for granted if it's going well. When you got congestion and flooding and sewer backing up, that's when people go, hey, we got to do better. Well, we're being challenged, not just us, every entity. So, that's why y'all made this a focus. Number three, parish-wide drainage needs and improvements. Build upon those. This is how important number three is. You actually covered number three and number two, technically, but y'all said drainage is so important because the people are saying it, it needs its own priority. And I'm really glad, because it is. We're still, as you know, we're in the middle of a four- or five-year multi-phase study that's had a lot of progress, excuse me, a lot of success and progress, but we still have more to go. So, I'm glad you put that as a separate one by itself. Okay, the last three. Parish-wide development through standards. A recognition, you can't just, this isn't 50 years ago, where hardly anybody lived outside of cities, you don't need a lot of rules. You got to be careful with rules. You don't want too many, you don't want them being too burdensome, but you have to have standards, especially for development, where you're managing the growth, it doesn't manage you. And y'all, I think, have done a great job with that. What I really like about this one is y'all said, look, don't just say general either. We got urban, we got suburban, we have rural areas in this parish, and they're different. And let's make sure we pay attention to that. Number five, strong quality of life. I venture to say, other than drainage, this phrase came up more than anything else in all the engagement we got, from the elected officials, employees, citizens, business, everybody. We're growing, and we're going to have a lot of people moving here, and we're saying, guys, you need the roads and bridges and all that, but you also have to think, what else do you need? Whether it's education, it may be cultural opportunities, it may be entertainment opportunities. Frankly, going to number six, and I'll segue, things like, you need to reduce litter. It's a blight on us. It's a stain. And strong wording from y'all that we need to put litter and pollution in general, water quality, as an emphasis. You can see there's a lot of connection between these. Number five and six have a lot of connections. So, again, we can go certainly in more detail if you like, but that's, everything in this document comes off of these six priority areas. Very briefly, the department leaders have taken all those goals, or excuse me, priority areas, developed their own goals, performance measures, and came up with 106 goals, which cover the waterfront. Obviously, I'm not expecting y'all to read this print size, but it's a good illustration of what's in the document. The top left, that's, there's a lot of matrix tables, charts in there, for every priority area. Now, very quickly, along the left are all the goals, the detailed goals. Across the top, hard to read, that's all the departments. I really want to hand it to Emergent Method on this. They take goals which involve, we may have five departments involved in some version of one of those goals y'all have. This says who all should be involved, which departments, and not only that, one step further, who should be the lead? You'll notice there's a bunch of S's and then an L's, that's support or lead. So, everybody's accountable, every department, every group of departments, and the employees in those departments. On the right is simply for each department, it's an example of how it looks for them. So, everybody's got a really good roadmap, as we said earlier. I debated putting this in, and thought, okay, just, if you want to know, what do you mean? Y'all really putting performance measures in there? This is about 40 of the total, there's a lot more, but you can kind of browse it and see yourself later when you have time. This is, when you say accountability, this is what we mean. So, I feel like I went through that pretty quickly, but I want to hit the high points. What are we seeing going forward? Well, on a basic calendar thing, tonight, we're not asking for action. We do want you to take this with you, but it's got all the input and the work from departments. We are asking that it be on your January 3rd agenda for approval, and we can hit the ground running. It becomes the official document for the parish for strategic planning. It's important to emphasize, we call this a living plan. What does that mean? We're not going to change the six priority areas. That's something you can do in the future, but that, you got to be flexible in how you might accomplish that, whether it's economics or state law that may change, you never know. But if, the great thing about this plan is it allows flexibility while keeping an eye on the goals. Number three, tonight, you passed your budget a few minutes ago for 2019. We actually, in that budget, had a strong focus, knowing that these goals were in the document, so it's already started. But in every year, when Tammy starts that process, of course, those resources, where should they be going? Well, what are our goals? What are you saying is important? So, that's what we'll do. Very important at the bottom there, public accountability is embedded throughout this process. This will be posted on the website, actually, tonight, it'll probably be on there, but year-round, our goal, and we're going to do it, anybody can go at any time, look at those goals, and we will periodically update it with progress. And this is something we've got to kind of move into. We haven't started that yet, but we will. So, that is about as quick as I can go through what is a 10-month process. It was very well done. I'm very proud of all the staff and very appreciative of all of you. You really embraced this, and that is no small thing. So, I appreciate that. I just put this up here at the end. I'm not going to read through it again, but this is what we want to be, and it will drive everything else. So, with that, I'm finished. As I mentioned, if you go to our website, it's actually going to be under that URL, and it'll be very easy to find, and we want people to go take a look at it as early as tomorrow. Certainly, if you have any questions or comments, I'm here. If not, again, we're ask you, please don't leave it here, take it with you, and we'll have it on your agenda for, in a couple of weeks, on January 3rd.
Hang tight right there for a second, Mr. Bean. Thank you. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, excellent presentation. I've always felt that we've been blessed with natural resources in Calcasieu Parish, but I've also felt that we have never capitalized on them to the fullest. And listening to you speak on this project and this planning for the future, I think is the key to move forward with the resources that we have, kind of a hand in the glove, if you follow where I'm coming, but from, obviously, a lot of hours went into this for the final, for your presentation tonight, but I'm telling you, I'm really impressed, and for me to say that is an understatement, and I really mean that sincerely, Brian. And I'm looking forward to working with you on this the next year, anyway.
Are you back, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Any further discussion? Excuse me, Mr. Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, everybody needs a plan, and y'all did a very good job on putting this plan together. The staff worked incredibly hard on this. But the most important part of any kind of a plan is the measurability of the plan after you put it into place. So, I'm really excited about having something that we can, we can really focus on measuring our productivity in the future, and I think this is a great.
Thank you, Les.
Any further discussion? Move to receive report. Got a motion to receive report by Mr. Andrew Pont, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. We're going to pause just for a bit. We, when we were, the choir was exiting, we failed to mention this. Ms. Mayo would like a point of personal preference.
Yes, I just want to take an opportunity to recognize this young man. He sang tonight in the choir, Mr. Jacelyn Bowers. Jacelyn Bowers has been selected to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York, was the High School Honors Society, High School Honors Performance Series. This talented performance arts student competed against more than 10,000 students internationally and was selected to not only represent La Grange High School, but Calcasieu Parish as well. I felt he deserved that recognition.
Big time, yes.
Jacelyn, you want to sing?
I want to.
And it's real hot.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy would one day walk on water? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? And this child that you delivered will soon deliver you? Mary, did you know that your baby boy has come to storm with his hand? Did you know that your baby boy has walked where angels tried? And when you kissed a little baby, you kissed the face of God. Oh, Mary, did you know?
I wonder if he needs an agent.
I know your parents and grandparents are excited.
Just to say, sometimes you really don't know the talent that's in Calcasieu Parish until you take the time to just invest in it. I hope that people that's listening and have the opportunity to hear this young man would somehow look to try and invest in his future, because this young man has a bright future. And I just hope that he can continue what he's doing, because if you listen to him, it's more than just him singing that song, guys. It's a message that's in there that touches all of us. And me being the tough, rugged guy, football player that I am, I was actually getting chills while this young man was singing.
You play football?
And it's just beyond me sometimes to know that the talent that's right here in Calcasieu Parish. We wish you the best, and Godspeed in all what you do, young man. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
Hey, first off, I just wanted to say, it's my wife's favorite song, so when you started singing it, I'm like, I know she'll watch this police jury meeting just to hear you sing. And the other thing I wanted to do, I wanted to turn my chair around so I could spin like The Voice and hit you and say, I want him on my TV. Thank you for singing that beautiful rendition. God bless you.
Finally got a reason for Hal's wife to watch him.
Get his video.
Moving right along. Item 10, consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 2751 Foreman Road in Ward 7, rezoned from agricultural to recreational vehicle park to allow a recreational vehicle park. I'll ask for either a motion to approve with condition or a motion to deny rezoning.
I would move to deny.
Thought they were all going to be to approve, so now we've changed it.
I will take whatever. Listen to what, I'll ask for a motion to approve with condition or a motion to deny rezoning.
Move to deny.
Second. Got a motion to deny rezoning by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Oh, I just seconded the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Any objection? Do we have, do we need to get the applicant up here?
The applicant's here.
Would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant here? Mr. Bert Daveville? There being no further discussion, there's no, are there any objections? That item carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 2070 Smith Road in Ward 3, rezoned from agricultural to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park. I'll ask for a motion to approve with condition or a motion to deny rezoning. Got a motion by Mr. Landry to deny rezoning, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have the applicant here?
Good evening, Todd Glass, Reliable Properties.
And your address?
3716 Placid Lane.
Thank you.
I just, I'd like to, just some communication of why it's been denied, the planning and zoning approved it, so I'm just kind of trying to figure out what's, what's the alternative here.
Mr. President, unfortunately, it's really just time to comment, really not to ask questions. So, if, the object is to figure out if this is a good rezoning or not.
Okay, so, what we're needing from you is, go ahead and give, we didn't see the, we don't have the benefit of being at the meeting and seeing your presentation. You've got, you got a minute or so to, you know, give us, why you think we should rezon this?
Well, it falls in line with the landscape of the character of the existing surrounding areas. I mean, we have an RV park north of it, we have, I would say, an affordable housing across the street, and we have another mobile home to the west, excuse me, to the east of it. So, I feel like it falls within the landscape of the, of the area. We're not trying to do anything that's kind of out of bounds here. We just, we feel like it's, we're providing a service. We hear all the time that we don't have enough affordable housing in the area, so we're trying to, trying to appease the people with that, so.
Okay, we have some discussion. Mr. Brain.
Todd, are these going to be used for rental? Are you going to put them in, the mobile homes themselves in the park?
Yes, sir.
And rent them yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're not just building a mobile home park?
No, sir.
That's even worse. Okay, I was under the impression that maybe it was just a mobile home park.
No, sir. The intent is for me to purchase every mobile home and be the landlord of every mobile home in the park.
Going to be gated or anything?
Yes, I had some discussion with my engineer about that the other day, and gating is always an option. I feel like that, I feel like gating would provide some kind of security access for people going in and out of there, so it would limit high traffic going in or unwanted traffic going in. So, we have actually addressed that, and I don't mind gating it. It's fairly easy to do that.
Maybe having a little heartburn about it, because I, like I said, I was under the impression that maybe it was a mobile home park, and now, now it's going to be, kind of like, I don't know, we've done this before, and it's not saying that you're going to do it, but we've done it before, and it ended up being, I don't want to use the word name. Excuse me? Oh, anyway, and, you know, I don't, we don't want that in that area.
A man camp?
Well, I'm not saying that's what you're going to do, I'm just saying.
No, we're just, we're trying to provide families' homes, is what we're trying to do. We're not trying to, this is not for workers, this is not for transits in and out, this is for families. I have other rental properties that are on the higher end. I've been approached by some peoples that would like to rent, and they can't find housing. So, I went out and searched, found the land, found what I thought would be a great spot. I did my research. I found that it's, it falls within the landscape. And, you know, and some of the people that I've talked to that have, that I've called back said, yeah, they'd love that.
Well, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but the property that's on, where the subdivision is, is that in the city limits?
City limits is across the street.
That's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
In fact, by the time I get through, he may not want to do it anymore. I completely disagree with his comments. There are some mobile homes there, but y'all have to understand, this is, these people are enjoying country living, or they were up until, you know, they did build the single-family homes across the street there. But, you know, you have people that are on acres of property that happen to be living in a mobile home. Now, if you go up the road, it's not within sight of this, but right down the road is the Tomasi Trailer Park, probably been there for 50 years. But it's down the road, it isn't here. That subdivision that is across the street is one that Mr. Connor had reviewed that is a complete disaster. And that person that won't, that developed that came to us, his retention ponds weren't even close to being large enough. And when he didn't hear what he wanted to hear from the police jury, he did. He went to the city and they annexed it and put a rubber stamp on it, and there's been nothing but drainage problems out there. I'm talking about on brand-new homes. And that's not this man's fault, of course, but, you know, there are drainage issues out there already. I know he's going to do his own drainage study to take care of his own water, but, you know, I wouldn't say, oh, let's just go with it because we're going to have some, they can annex it tomorrow, and it doesn't really matter what we said. I mean, you know, it's going to be a whole different, which I've heard that's what's going to happen anyway. So it's definitely not consistent. I mean, the people that live out here do not want that. I've had people that have called from the subdivision that are living there that are against it, as well as the people that are living in houses or mobile homes that are around it. You know, it's just, I put myself in their position. If I lived there, I don't want a trailer park being built next to my house, I just don't. Yeah, we need affordable housing, but, I mean, back to the RV thing, this really isn't much different. We're going to be the mobile home capital of the whole state of Louisiana, more mobile home parks and RV parks than we can stand. We need good housing, good affordable housing, not a whole bunch of trailer parks. I took a look at it, there's no recreation area there. You know, it's going to have a little retention pond up front, hopefully have a little bit of landscaping, you know? We're going to throw a fence around it. You know, it's lipstick on a pig. I don't care what you, it's still going to be a pig. It's still an old trailer park, and it's a rental trailer park on top of that. Maybe he's going to be a great landlord, and it's going to be spotless, and he's going to rent it to great people. He's not going to keep it forever. I mean, he's just not. I just don't think it's a good thing to do. I think I'm done for right now.
Mr. Guidry.
Thank you. My only comment, Glass, was that in the past, we've had people that have come up and wanted to do these type parks and gotten permits for them and everything, and have set on them for like six months to a year. What's your intention, if by chance it passes tonight? How soon would you get started on this project? And do you have the clients ready to move in when this is done?
The clients, I mean, that's fluid.
Families, rather, not clients but families.
Families, that's fluid because sometimes some can wait, some can't. I mean, I have verbals, but that's, you know, that's as good as what their situation is. Half-house, we ready to move? We're waiting on this. I mean, my engineer, we're waiting.
How many are you looking at again?
Say, I'm sorry?
How many are you looking at again to put in?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. And checking with our plan department, is that conducive to the amount of property that you have there right now to put that many in?
I believe so.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Can you shine a little light on his question there? Is it, it fits the square footage and all that?
Yes, sir. Now, he did, he did request a variance on the lot size, which was, you know, is granted by the board last night. And so, so in my opinion, I think that I did recommend to grant this because I thought that it was a consistent land use pattern because there are several existing mobile home parks in the general area. One is the one, the Tomasi Park, which is, you know, about a half a mile down the road. And then there's some other larger parks, probably about a mile or so away. This property, I do agree, Ms. Landry there, and the folks that live out there, this has been sort of, you know, rural living, if you will, in the past, and it is on agricultural right now. However, this is located in the urban service area, okay? And so it is surrounded by, to the north and to the west and to the east, I think, by the city. So there is that potential of the city annexing this property, as well as other properties that are in the south Ward Three area. You know, this is, this is not going to be that, you know, the property around there is probably going to be developed, and it's probably going to be developed, you know, with other denser housing units because it's just growing, you know, in this area. So this is a, you know, a manufactured home park is sort of, in our history, you know, that has been the affordable housing type of land use. And so I think this gentleman here is trying to feel that need, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gap?
Mr. President, I think we do have one speaker in opposition, so if there are no more questions for the applicant, maybe he'll have to speak before more discussion.
Okay, we've got Mr. Foreman, no, excuse me, Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo a little bit what Chris and Guy said. When I was called yesterday on this rezoning issue, I was told it was a mobile home park, which I said earlier I was not going to vote for any more RVs, and I'm going to stick to my guns on that. I don't see much difference between that and an RV park, if you're going to run out these mobile homes. I really don't. And I, for a mobile home park, people bringing in their own mobile homes, I could probably support that, but I'm not going to support this the way you want to do it. I'm sorry, that just falls into the RV category as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
Just a comment on Mr. West's, I mean, Mr. Crane's comments. Sorry about that. What's happening a mile away from me, I really don't care about. You know what I'm saying? I can't even see those other trailer parks right there. So, you know, and look, I'm not saying your recommendation is wrong because most of the time it's not, and I, because I know what you're going by, but I disagree with you. I think you're wrong. But you may not be. I know you don't think you are, obviously. This time, I don't care what you think, I think I'm right. But it is some distance from that property. And look, I never got one phone call when they were building the single-family homes. People understand that property's going to be developed. Everybody out there, they all understand that. They just want to see single family, and they don't even mind it being denser. I don't, you know, as long as it's done right, and you know, the drainage study and all this stuff's done, I don't really think that's the issue.
Well, I think under our ordinance, we look at manufactured homes as single-family homes. That's just how our ordinance has been for many, many years.
Maybe we need to look at that.
And so, you know, that's, as a staff and as a plant, that's what, that's how we look at it.
Right, I understand. That's all you can go by.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Foreman?
Have you had any discussions with any of the industry about renting it to, as a block unit to anybody?
No, sir.
None whatsoever?
No, sir.
Because I've seen these parks get approved, and then instantly somebody approaches them to turn it into an uncontrolled man camp, if you will. I've got two of them in my district that were just force-fed down our throat because they meet the letter of the law, the way it's written today. So, you know, I just, I'm very skeptical about these kind of things across, especially across the street from residential property. These folks bought their property understanding that it was agricultural across the street from them. Granted, they don't own the property, but they bought their property based on the surrounding zoning, which protected them from these kind of things at the time. So, again, I can't support it, so appreciate you coming up here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Mr. Scott?
Nobody's asked you the question yet, but would you be willing to just rent these spaces to people that bring their mobile homes in? And it's speculative, I'm just asking the question.
So, let me speak on that. I mean, we're talking about other people owning these trailers. When someone else owns a mobile home in your park and that starts deteriorating, it is hard to get them out of there. It is hard to make them clean that up. If I own it, I get to dictate who's in there and who's not in there. So the whole, the thought process in my brain is, you know, I own the home, I have a legal right to say who can, who can't go in there. I know most of you don't know me, but the ones that do, I'm a straight honest guy. I'm not one that's going to hide behind a curtain and say I'm going to do this and do something else. That's not who I am. So I'm telling you, these are going to be for families. I don't, this is not going to be a man camp, it's not going to be a worker camp, it's not going to be, it's for mom and the kids that can't afford my $1,600 a month units. That's what this is for. That's why I did this. So I went out, searched for it, and I just believe that it's a need. I've been approached by doing some duplexes there. Duplexes is going to raise the price on the rent because it costs just almost double to do it. So to get affordable houses in this area, mobile home park is the only thing that's going to work. I mean, it's just, that's just the way it is. I mean, and it's going to get developed one day. I mean, why not let a guy do it that's going to do it and do it right?
So my next statement would be, I guess the reason you need smaller lot size by 500 square feet is because our drainage ordinance requires more retention? I'm assuming for your engineer to make that fit, the retention had to be a little bigger.
I'll be honest with you, it's six trailers. The difference in 5,000 and 4,500, we were just trying to maximize our growth. I mean, and if it needs to go back to 5,000, excuse me, 5,000 a lot to fall within the parish ordinance, I'm fine with that.
Well, that's if your drainage would fit. So I'm sure whoever, your engineers probably knows about what you'd be facing, so I wouldn't think he'd halfway you. So I'm assuming he's trying to shrink it to help you plus fit all your drainage? I can only assume that.
I think the drainage fit well within that. I think we're okay with that. I mean, I can't, I mean, he's the engineer, not I, so.
Well, hopefully you'll remember all these good things that you can do when you end up in the city. If it fails tonight, you'll still put a privacy fence and all those other things. Just asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guidry?
Mr. President, let me yield. I'll go ahead and take the person that's speaking in opposition, I'll wait for that.
We have no more questions for the applicant. We have one, one person that would like to speak against, Mr. Russell Drott. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Russell Drott, I live at 2056 Smith Road. Mr. Landry has really hit on basically most of our concerns, but I'm going to, you know, I'm standing here and say we are in opposition of it. My parents are, they were here Tuesday night, you know, and they're just, they felt like they didn't even have a hope to come tonight, you know, just because it was going to be approved no matter, you know, whether they were here or not. So to hear y'all speak in the way that y'all are, it does, thank y'all, that y'all are looking out for us. We really, really just don't want, you know, I don't want to sit on my front porch, drink a cup of coffee and look at a fence or look at a bunch of trailer lots, you know? Little history on the property was, you know, it was my great-grandparents homesteaded the property, that's how long it's been in our family. So, you know, we've looked at cow fields and just open land, and to look at the back of a fence or, you know, and if it does approve, you know, I don't know if this is a time or place for it, but, you know, if he puts a fence in the back is fine, but up by the front, by the road, you know, right in front of my parents' house, if we can get some kind of iron glade fence or, you know, something where they can still see out, you know, because that's their only view, so, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for him, okay?
Would like to speak to Mr. Russell for one second, right quick.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Russell, so you do realize that this project possibly could hit the city and that he could still end up doing this, and you would fight this same fight again, but maybe lesser of help as far as stipulations?
I am aware of that.
And that's a gamble y'all willing to take?
I hope it doesn't come to that, but, you know. I mean, like I said, growth is fine, you know, duplexes, you know, if it's houses, I mean, the houses just to the west, they just, I mean, those are $200,000 homes, you know, and I'm sure these people don't want, you know, mobile homes next to them either. But, you know, like you said, the city's going to do what they do.
That is your parents' house in the middle of that little cutout right there?
That is actually was my uncle's house, who they sold to Tanya and Greg, who we have talked to, they're opposition of it too. My parents' house is actually the gray house that's not cut out.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay, I think we're going to do a roll call vote, and we had a motion.
Denied.
A motion to deny rezoning. Ms. Secretary?
No. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Foreman?
Yes.
Mr. Guidry?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hayles?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
No.
And yays, four nays, the motion carries. The zoning was denied.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Moving to item 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 2019 Sam Houston Jones Parkway in Ward One to rezone from central business commercial. And manufactured home park to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park. I'll ask for either a motion to approve with conditions or a motion to deny rezoning. I have a motion by Mr. White to approve with conditions. Second that, or is that a?
A second and I'd like.
Okay, second and discussion, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Vice President White, would you be willing to see if this gentleman's willing to put a gated facility on the front? That's one of the things the sheriff has talked about for several months now, as we look at these larger mobile home parks. So is that something, is he here tonight?
Actually existing.
So they're adding?
They're adding.
All right, and then I'm still, I'll second, and we can be done with that then.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Landry?
But now's the time, like Dennis just said, now's the time. I'm telling you, not that the sheriff's department's ever gone out there one time, but I'm telling you, that dump out there on the Gulf Highway in my district, in one month, what was the number? It was 50, 60 times, they went to one mobile home park. The people that own it, of course, live in Florida. The sheriff department has contacted them, they're very much aware of the problem, tried to say, hey, look, y'all need to put a gate there, where they got a key and a code, because a lot of what's going on there, it's actually not people that live in the park, it's coming from outside the park. And so that would really cut down on the number of calls. I mean, can you imagine the resources that they're having to waste on that one park? You don't want me to tell you what the answer was? From what I heard, he pretty much told them, ah, we're not.
central business commercial...
Motion to approve with conditions.
And manufactured home park to manufactured home park to allow a manufactured home park. I'll ask for either a motion to approve with conditions, or a motion to deny rezoning. I have a motion by Mr. White to approve with conditions. Second that, or is that a...
A second and a...
Okay, second and discussion, Mr. Scott.
Uh, Mr. Vice President White, would you be willing to see if this gentleman's willing to put a gated facility on the front? That's one of the things the sheriff has talked about for several months now, as we look at these larger mobile home parks. So, is that something, is the, is he here tonight?
Actually existing.
So, they're adding?
They're adding.
All right, and then, I'm still, I'll second, and we can be done with that then.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Landry.
But now's the time, like Dennis just said, now's the time. I'm telling you, not that the sheriff's department's ever gone out there one time, but I'm telling you, that dump out there on the Gulf Highway in my district, in one month, what was the number? It was fifty, sixty times, they went to one mobile home park. The people that own it, of course, live in Florida, the sheriff department has contacted them, they're very much aware of the problem, tried to say, hey, look, y'all need to put a, a gate there, where they got a key and a code. Because a lot of what's going on there, it's actually not people that, that live in the park, it's coming from outside the park. And so, that would really cut down on the number of calls. I mean, can you imagine the resources that, that they're having to waste on that one park? You don't want me to tell you what the answer was? From what I heard, he pretty much told them, ah, we're not doing it. Can't make them do it. Right now, we can. And, and you, you gotta take the opportunity, they, they need the zoning, we need the gate, or the sheriff's department needs it, so they can concentrate their resources on other things instead of going out to a trailer park sixty times in one month.
Mr. White?
The applicant is here, correct? And I know that this, uh, property is fenced all the way around it as we speak, so adding a gate, would, would that be something you'd be willing to do?
We've already looked into it, um, you know, we, we hadn't done it to this point because it hadn't been needed, but, I mean, we don't want bad people in there just as well as, y'all don't wanna, I mean, I don't know what the purpose y'all think a fence serves, um, I mean, this park is a, a one-way in, one-way out park, um, pretty much all the roads are dead end, so somebody that's up to no good, if they get in there, they, it's not hard for them to get blocked in. And I guess, on the second note, is we're not at, I mean, basically, this is a rezoning park, I mean, this park was there, we came in and we changed the layout, um, it was never zoned correctly, apparently, from day one, has had, um, some parts of its mobile homes, some parts are commercial, um, I mean, the park's pretty much done. It's, uh, we, we had the last five trailers that are in, um, we're needing to get permits for them, the rest of the park is complete, uh, we have some fences on, I guess, if this passes, that we need to, but that's all Moss Bluff ordinances anyway, that we, we need to follow.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, I, yeah, I wasn't... Here's the problem, he might be a great owner, I'm sure he is, probably runs a fantastic park. You're not gonna live forever, and neither are any of us, and somebody else is gonna own it later, and they may not be the operator that you are, uh, that, that's the thing. They may be in Florida and not really care, as long as they collecting the rent. That, that's, that's the issue. It isn't you, it isn't your park, it's just the big picture, they ought to all have the gated entry, they just should. And, and Dennis has had more than one conversation with the sheriff's department, they're desperately wanting this to be done, I guess they have not made an official request from us, and, and maybe that's what we should ask for. Have, have they contacted you, Mr. Crane?
No, sir.
Okay. But y'all, the, there's members of the staff that's very much aware of the problem. Go ahead, Mr. Bowling, you're aware of the problem.
No, you, you asked Mr. Landry if they made contact, and, uh, we did meet with the sheriff's office on a particular, uh, mobile home park. And they, uh, we asked for some advice and their recommendations when it relates to these type of parks, and they did really stress access control, uh, not knowing this park or anything about the owner, but that was one of their concerns, is trying to find some way to control the access of these parks.
And really, when that one was first approved, I don't think they had those problems. Now, what has changed out there, I don't know, but if that was our policy on the front end, it would save the sheriff's department a whole lot of trouble later, if they get these owners that aren't as attentive, or out of state, and don't really care. I mean, it would help. Or they, they're telling you that it would help, that is what they told you, isn't it?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Uh, let's see, Mr. Gidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Crane, help me understand, we, um, just denied an application for looking at the next item, it's pretty much the exact same item, am I correct in saying that?
It's, uh, well, the, the difference in this particular, uh, park is that it's an existing, uh, it's an existing park, it's a non-conforming, uh, uh, existing non-conforming use, okay? So, the park was in existence prior to the adoption of the, uh, of the ordinance back in the eighties. So, uh, what the developer did is come in and revamp this particular manufactured home park. He, he got rid of all of the other, the old, uh, trailers in that particular, uh, and, and brought in new trailers. And so, he revamped the whole thing. What he's asking for tonight is there's a, there is a, um, a pond on the west side of the property, and, uh, he's asking to, to fill that in and to add additional spaces in the, on the existing property. He owns the property already, but he's asking to close that in and, and add additional spaces. And then, also getting the zoning correct. In other words, right now, it's zoned C-three, commercial, he's trying to get the zoning correct, you know, on this piece of property. Okay?
I just wanted to make sure we were...
Can I, can I say one thing?
On the same page.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Um, you know, when I bought this park, it was a, it's the same amount of lots, um, that I've had a permit for the whole time I've owned this park. Um, actually, maybe less occupancy now, it had fifty-six, um, mobile homes it was permitted for, and at the time when I bought it, I think it had four houses on it. Um, we cleaned the whole park up, I mean, we brought it up to, um, every standard that we could, I mean, we, we're really not asking to, um, enlarge this park, it's just, we basically, when we started putting trailers back in it, we tried to meet, even though it was a, a grandfathered-in park, we basically, the five thousand square foot and everything, I mean, we basically moved the lots around to, to, to meet all the current codes.
Uh, Mr. White?
I agree with, uh, what Chris and, and the rest of the jurors are saying about a gated entrance to your park. And what Wes said about, or Mr. Crane said about a revamp is an understatement. What you've done to that manufactured home park is made one big difference, it's like you waved a magic wand, and, I mean, you took out the trash and brought in something nice as far as a manufactured home park for my area. And I, and I wanna thank you for that, for one. Two, thank you for always keeping it clean the way it's kept clean. I mean, it's, I have zero complaints there, uh, I don't know about the sheriff and how much they have to go inside the park, I don't know the numbers for that, but as far as the way you keep this property, I wanna tell you thank you for that, because I know it's not an easy task when you have that many homes within that area, uh, so you've done a great job. I made a motion to approve with conditions, would adding the gate entrance stipulation...
I really don't know what the cost is that I'm agreeing to, I guess, is the, is the main thing, um, I mean, we're, we're kinda improving things, I mean, if, if, I guess if a stipulation is I could do it in the next two years, um, you know, um, the problem is, is, you know, we, we still trying to, to finish the improvement of the park. But, I mean, there's really, I mean, how does a, how does a gated, I mean, a gated is more for the people in the park, not for, I mean, y'all, y'all want a gate to keep the outside world out, where most people put a gate, a gated community is to protect the people in the park. It, it is, it's kinda the opposite of what, what y'all are up there saying, a, a gate's not gonna keep, I mean, I mean, to be honest, most time, the people are worried about a trailer park, the people in it, not the people out it, outside of it. And by putting a gated community, it, yeah, if that's what it takes to go ahead and get this done, y'all, put a gate up. I mean, the fence, the fence is already there, if you scroll through the pictures, I mean, it's a matter of putting a gate.
That would be one of my conditions for your park, to be honest with you. It, it, it would add another feature to your park that I think everybody would like.
Yeah, we've already looked into it, I just don't, you know...
And the fact of it being a one-way for putting a gate in, I, I don't agree with you on that, due to the fact that you, you keep people in, or keep people out of that park that doesn't need to be in there, and if people are, are allowing them to have the code to get in there, then they're in there for a reason, and most of the time, it's for the right reason.
Right. It's not gonna hurt our park, so, I mean, it's, it's only gonna improve it.
Exactly. I yield back.
Thank you. Mr. Gidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise this will be my last time, but I, I, I understand totally what Mr. Dennis is saying, and Mr. Landry, and also Mr. White. That's what we try and do, we try and make it to where we wanna set a standard. But the problem that I'm having is that the gentleman that came up before you, Mr. Glass, wanted to do the exact same thing and more, and we denied him. And this gentleman right here is gonna do the exact same thing, correct me if I'm wrong, you will be renting those units?
I mean, I, right now, I presently have fifty-one units in there.
Okay, and it's whomever, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, and this gentleman was gonna...
It's not the same.
I, I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding, how can these two items be different? And maybe it's just me, guys, maybe my glasses is just too strong tonight, I don't know.
Mr. Crane, Mr. Crane, would you like to...
I'm just having a hard time understanding how we approve one and deny the other.
Would you like another crack at explaining this?
I'll tell him. Can I speak?
Mr. Landry? Okay, Mr. Landry.
The difference, Kevin, and believe me, I would vote against this one as well, this is an existing park, it's already there. The first one was agriculture land that has not been developed yet. So, there's no reason, I mean, we're, we're not adding any trailer parks to the parish, it's already there. And it sounds like the guy's done a great job about going in there and cleaning up a mess. So, I'm all behind him, I wanna help him, I wanna grant what he's asking for, the only thing in return, I would just like it to be a gated, where they gotta push a code to get in. And mainly, that request comes from the sheriff's department. And I'm gonna, every, every one from the rest of the time I'm here, I'm gonna ask for that every time, every time. That's the only reason, believe me, if the park wouldn't already be there, I wouldn't be voting for it. So, that, that's the difference.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Uh, are we, does anybody, okay, Mr. Andrew Pond?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'm glad you agreed to put it to the second page. I totally agree with Mr. Landry, and I had the same situation in my district where it was not gated, and I'm telling you, the sheriff's department was there most of the time, daily, daily, not monthly. So, I'm glad you agreed to do that, you'll have my vote now, but if you hadn't agreed to that, I wouldn't have voted for you.
Thank you.
I give back. Ah, Mr. Brain?
Uh, thank you, uh, Judd. Uh, maybe I was, uh, I missed something, or maybe I didn't...
So, the, the mobile homes that you wanna add, you, you're gonna fill in a pond that's there now?
It's, it's actually already filled in.
Okay, so do you have any drainage issues?
No.
Or did it cause any drainage issues when you filled it in?
No.
No. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Mr. Fornum?
Thank you, um, I, I do, uh, agree with the gate, we need to give him a timeframe, he, he asked for a couple of years, um, is that too long, a year?
I think, I mean...
Say, within a year, I mean, there's, and, and unexpected expenses in a business plan are hard to swallow, so, uh, if we can give him a little bit of time, you know, I don't expect him to have it in there tomorrow, so, whatever y'all think in your motion, I just think you oughta have some timeframe established.
Okay.
Within two thousand nineteen, or you, would you be...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Gabb?
And, Mr. President, if I can help, from what I'm hearing, uh, I wrote down that maybe somebody needs to move to add additional condition to require gated access within two years, in a form to be approved by divisions of planning and engineering.
One year, two thousand nineteen.
I'm sorry, within one year, I'm sorry.
So, we'd like, we need that in the form of a motion. Move.
Second.
Got a motion to add a stipulation, has a gated, coded, uh, excuse me, coded gate within the calendar year of two thousand nineteen. Had a second by Mr. Scott, uh, excuse me, Ms., uh, Ms. Trimmie.
About my name, I hadn't talked in so long.
If we can, if we can vote on that, uh...
We'll vote on that now, so, any discussion on that, on the amendment? Any objection? That item, the amendment carries. So, now, it brings us to the, the original motion, which was to approve with conditions. Got a motion by Mr. White, and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Thirteen, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. Twelve hundred Block of Ham Reed Road in Ward Three to rezone from light commercial to multifamily residential to allow residential development. I'll ask for a motion to approve with conditions, or a motion to deny rezoning. Got a motion to approve...
With conditions.
With conditions by Mr. Scott, and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the professional engineering services contract between the police jury and Oakland and Associates Incorporated for the North Perkins Ferry Road Bridge Replacement Project. I got a motion by Ms. Trimmie, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Fifteen, consideration of adopting a resolution... We're on fifteen. Approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Beauregard Electric Cooperative Incorporated for the Coach Williams Drive Extension Project. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan, and a second by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the terms of an employment agreement between the police jury and Brian C. Beam for the position of parish administrator. I've got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pond, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Excuse me. Seventeen, consideration of adopting an ordinance establishing no parking on Candace Lane. Got a motion by Mr. Gilery, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Mr. Gilery.
Uh, I guess I can ask, is it the no parking with the, uh, for the truck, the eighteen-wheeler weight limit? Is that the one? Oh, this is the Candace Lane, okay, by the hotel.
No parking, period.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application for the two thousand eighteen Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program for Advanced Assistance to fund the development of future mitigation strategies. I got a motion by Mr. Scott, and a second by Mr. White. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Beam, last week at our national, uh, one of our national meetings, they have now put open space as a committee with the Environment, Energy, and Land Use Group, so open space is now being recognized as the most affordable way to prevent flood from happening in the future, so as we continue to ask for more hazard mitigation funds, we need to start focusing on where we can purchase land now that will benefit us in the future, cause it's gonna be no cheaper, way cheaper than building a retention pond. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott? Any further discussion on that? Any objection? That item carries. Nineteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the city of Westlake for the transfer of ownership of the property acquired by the police jury pursuant to hazard mitigation federal grant. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan, and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Mr. Scott?
Just so you know, that's now called open space, but it costs a whole lot of money to get it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the renewal of the software as a service agreement between the police jury and Tyler Technologies Inc. for the parish's financial software system. Got a motion by Mr. Collins, and a second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty-one, consideration of adopting resolutions for the following activities for the calendar year twenty nineteen for the police jury and its departments. A, authorize the parish purchasing agent to issue and sign purchase orders. B, authorize the purchasing agent to utilize state contract procedures, advertise for bids and requests for proposals, or piggyback on other Louisiana governmental entity contracts for applicable purchases and standard bid items. C, declare various movable assets, heavy equipment, and vehicles of various parish departments, districts, and agencies as surplus property, and authorize the disposal of said items. D, authorize the parish treasurer and/or parish purchasing agent to execute the designation of construction contractor as agent of a governmental entity, sales tax exemption certificate. E, authorize the parish administrator to execute any procurement-related contracts which are under one hundred thousand dollars and are not required to be formally procured. F, authorize the parish administrator or his designee to execute any contracts and/or cooperative endeavor agreements for I, procurement under one hundred thousand dollars. II, services or III, other day-to-day operating activities between the police jury and the various special service districts, nonprofit organizations, or other governmental entities. G, authorize the parish administrator or parish treasurer to execute all risk management and health clinic-related activities for 2019. H, authorize the parish administrator to execute any documents related to day-to-day operating activities conducted by the parish. I, authorize the parish administrator or the parish treasurer to execute any documents related to the day-to-day grant activities. J, authorize the parish administrator, parish engineer, and public works director to execute any documents related to use or activity conducted within parish roadside rights-of-way. K, authorize the parish administrator and the director of planning and development to execute procurement contracts related to private property activities, including demolitions of condemned structures, junk removal, down trees, or other debris removal, and sewer abatement issues. L, authorize the library director to execute any procurement-related contracts for the library system which are under one hundred thousand dollars and are not required to be formally pro-procured. And M, authorize the parish purchasing agent to extend standard bid contracts. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a, on all bullets, by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty-two, consideration of adopting resolutions for the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. A, authorize the director of Human Services to execute programmatic agreements under the Community Services Block Grant. B, authorize the director of Human Services to execute program-specific agreements with homeowners relative to housing assistance payment contracts. C, authorize the director of Human Services and/or the Workforce Development Board Director to execute programmatic agreements for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. D, approve a joint services agreement between the police jury, the Calhoun Parish Sheriff's Office, the Calhoun Parish District Attorney's Office, the Ward Three Marshal's Office, and the City of Lake Charles for continuation of the Triad Program. E, approve a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the Southwest Louisiana Area Health Education Center for Nursing and Clerical Services at the Calhoun Parish Health Unit. F, approve cooperative endeavor agreements for this, for participation and funding assistance in support of the 2019 Summer Food Service Program. G, approve changes to the following chapters of the Section Eight Administrative Plan. H, acknowledgement of submission of minutes from the Calhoun Parish Human Services Advisory Board for a meeting held on July twenty-fourth, 2018. Mr. Gilery moves on all bullets and Mr. Abshire, seconds. Y'all found, y'all used piggybacking for another word up there, y'all couldn't have found something that simple for programmatic? Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty-three.
Move on twenty-three.
Consideration of authorizing the parish engineer to advertise for the following projects. A, Lincoln Road Brid- Bridge Replacement Project, and B, Patton Street Bridge Replacement Project. I've got a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty-four, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the parish purchasing agent to purchase a Mobile Emergency Operation Command Center. Mr. Grimeon.
Um, I have a couple of slides, I think that'll explain the project here. Basically, what we're doing is, we have this unit that's currently in service, uh, this was designed in 2004, delivered in 2005, probably about six weeks after Hurricane Rita, right after we could have used it, but it has been used extensively since then. This unit was primarily designed as a communications vehicle. Uh, if you look at the picture on the right-hand side there, it gives you an idea of the, of the interior space. There's about a two-and-a-half-foot walkway through this vehicle, and either sides of it is all radios and other electronic equipment. Kind of a diagram of, of the interior of it, uh, designed to have six people, hopefully rather thin people in the back, four would be, four would be more appropriate, and then two persons up in the front. And again, this is, uh, 2005 technology. We had, it had quite a bit of equipment for its day, but it's now, uh, thirteen going on fourteen years old. This is what we're proposing to get. This vehicle has around twice as much space on the interior. Uh, at the time that we bought the other vehicle, the slide-outs were just becoming popular, the manufacturer did not even recommend getting them at that time, but now, uh, with all of the, you know, RVs and things out there, the slide-outs work a lot better than they did, plus they expand the, you, you still have the same footprint from the width when you put the slide-outs in, but when you slide them out, there's considerably more room. It's designed with a, um, in mind of having a, um, parish executive policy group meeting. We have a conference table with, with eight chairs. On the sides, there are some other jump seats that, uh, staff or other people could, uh, use to sit in. In the rear, uh, again, two slide-outs. Uh, these are operator positions here. Each, uh, operator has a radio and two, uh, computer screens. We also have, uh, coordinated with 911, we're able to accommodate actually a 911 dispatcher in the vehicle if, if need be. It also has a satellite, uh, system on it that'll accommodate, uh, ten voice-over-IP telephones, uh, could be used as a substitute office. In fact, the one that we have now was used in that, uh, manner out in Vinton when their city hall burned, it was out there for several weeks. Uh, some examples of some of the other parishes, uh, East Baton Rouge Parish, Ascension Parish, Jefferson Parish, and Orleans Parish. And of course, this one is built on a Prevost bus, I think just a chassis for this one's probably about a million dollars. Kind of busy, but this is a floor layout, and you can see here what the slide-outs do for the, uh, space. Also, uh, all of the, uh, communications electronic gear, and that would be the latest versions of that. Uh, if anybody needs any of the specs, I'd be happy to discuss that or send them to you later if, if need be. Uh, the generator's a twenty-five kilowatt versus twelve on the current one. And one, one other thing I'll mention, someone asked me about the service life, this vehicle should have a fifteen to twenty-year service life. The one that we have now is, is thirteen years going on fourteen, but it has been stored outside for the whole time we've had it. The new vehicle will be stored at the, uh, three thousand one building, we have a temperature control, uh, area in the back of the building. Uh, we've had to run air conditioner on the other vehicle for the whole time to keep the electronics from getting moisture and other things in them. We looked at, uh, retrofitting the vehicle we have now, uh, if you were to pull out the interior, fix the floor and everything else needed to be fixed on it, cost would be three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, um, the vehicle also has capability of transmitting, uh, images through the camera on the vehicle back to the internet, so that we'd have live video from the scene if needed. Also working with Seegov, possibility of them using it as a mobile studio. And, um, that's it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Grimeon. Uh, Ms. Trimmie.
Yeah, I would just, are, are you actually, uh, the vehicle we have now, I mean, which has been awesome, thank God we had it?
Right.
So, are we, uh, trading that in on this? Is that the reason for the cost being lower?
The, the, um, the manufacturer offered us fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle, but I think the consensus is for that price, we'd just go ahead and keep it for the time being.
I agree for that, yeah. So, that'll give us, uh, a twofer.
Yes, ma'am. It needs a little work on it, but it, it makes sense to, to keep it at that price, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Trimmie. Mr. White?
You know, Mr. Grimeon, during the, the flooding we've had and what these vehicles are used for, um, as me and Mr. Bears were out during the flooding, looking at other parishes, command centers and, and going inside theirs and then get back in ours, I felt like I was about to go deliver bread, honestly. I mean, it's, it is outdated, and y'all, we definitely, as a parish, need another command center that's up to date. Uh, I fully support you and your staff on getting another one. Look, uh, look forward to seeing it, that's for sure. Thank you, I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item twenty-five, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to either advertise for bids or purchasing, purchase utilizing state contract purchasing procedures for the 2019 vehicles and/or equipment for use by police jury departments. I got a motion by Mr. Landry, second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item twenty-six, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for the ten-twenty Ryan Street demolition project. Uh, staff recommends that the low bid in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars from Kealan Construction LLC be accepted. Item twenty-seven.
Move adjourned.